This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. The monthly meetings of the board are designed to conduct the business of governing the school system in public. However, this is not a meeting to interact with the public. We welcome you as guests to observe and listen, and we do have a scheduled time within the agenda for the public to address the board. In compliance with the state government code on open meetings, documentation of these proceedings will become part of the Tyler ISD permanent legal record. In order to ensure accuracy, please refrain from talking while others are speaking and turn off cell phones and other electronic devices. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate our STAR success. We review performance information and make policy decisions related to student achievement and the effective operations of Tyler ISD Public Schools. We're reconvening from executive session. Before we begin the meeting, as always, we start with a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. This month, it is led by Mr. Martinez.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our students, teachers, and this community. Continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for you and in your service. Lord, as we sit on the brink of a new year, I ask that you be with our children as they return to the classroom. Protect them from harm, give them guidance in the choices they make, and please provide them with a desire to learn and grow. For our teachers and staff, please provide them with patience and compassion. Help them to always have the right words of encouragement for each student. Help them to continue to show the enthusiasm for their profession throughout the school year. Give our parents willing hearts to serve you by spending time in our classrooms or at home and be actively involved in their child's learning. And finally, please help us to open our hearts and minds to listen and understand without judgment. May we be reminded that we are created in your image, and you provided us each with unique gifts to serve one another. We realize you gave your son to the world as a gift of hope and a promise of reconciliation. We pray that your spirit will fill us with love and respect for our differences which teach us so much about one another and about you. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have two action items coming out of executive session. The first is item A, the hiring of a Director of Bilingual and ESL, Dr. Crawford.
We have promoted Mina Noronho to John Tyler as Dean of Instruction. We're excited about that and the influence and difference she's going to make there. She did a great job leading our bilingual program. We now have in front of you a recommendation to replace that position with Anna Maria Seguline.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the administration's recommendation to hire Anna Maria Seguline for Director of Bilingual ESL.
I think your accent was better than Dr. Crawford's.[252.12][252.12](Laughter). No offense, I hope. Do I have a second for the motion?
(Inaudible) second motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have nothing under item B. Under item C, we did just conduct a Level 3 grievance during an executive session. Do I have a motion on that item?
President Hager, I move that we uphold the Level 2, understanding that went on with the parental complaint.
Mr. Hardy, is that a, that's an acceptable motion as stated?
Level 2 decision. Uphold the Level 2 decision.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burkfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have minutes for approval. Any comments or corrections on minutes?
Reverend Hager, I make a motion. We approve the minutes of July 10th and July 27th of 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Burkfield. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, Lone Star Governance and Continuous Improvement. It's part of our effort to maintain our focus on student achievement, so we front-load the meeting with items focused directly on that issue. So we have two things we're going to talk about, the first being the Accountability 101.
Reverend Hager, Board of Trustees, we're happy to provide our annual Accountability 101. As Mr. Sanchez, Dr. Kuratin, and Dr. Hanson make their way to the front table to give you the presentation, as you stated earlier, it is, it is our purpose to have this as the very first thing that we do at our board meetings. It does take our precedence as we are trying to focus on successful student outcomes. Very happy to report to the public, it's been widely reported. Thank you, Corey. In regard to our progress that we've made, we've gone from 11 to 9 to 3 to 2 now, low performing campuses over the last three years. So excited about our staff and our principals that are here tonight that have actually contributed to that. If you're a principal at one of our campuses and you're here tonight, would you please stand so that we can give you a round of applause?[401.08][401.08](Applause). Okay, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Kuratin, who is our Director of Assessment and Data Analysis. I don't know what your official title is, but somewhere around there. Raleigh Sanchez, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and then Dr. Kristy Hanson, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. Dr. Hanson?
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, President Hager, and the rest of the board. We're going to start with talking a little bit about the accountability system. So, thank you. First of all, it's important to know that we operate under several different accountability systems. We have the current state index system. We have the A through F accountability system that we are going to be working under in the 1718 school year. We have the very new Every Student Succeeds Act that we are all going to be looking at, as well as PBMAS, which is our Performance Monitoring Analysis System. And so, it's, it's important that we understand that we're working under a lot of different systems here. I went the wrong way. There we go. So, the A through F accountability system started with the 84th Legislature. It was then House Bill 2804, and the 85th Legislature just ruled on it some more, so we're under House Bill 22 now. The accountability scores that we're going to share with you tonight came under the 1617 index system. And then the ESSA is our new, it's replaced, No Child Left Behind. It's our new federal system. And we will have an A through F rating from the federal government as well, and I want you to know it's highly possible that it will be a completely different A through F. So it's possible that the district could have one letter grade for the state and a different letter grade for the federal, for the federal system. And then we, of course, are under the PBMAS, which, that is a system where anytime we get title money for specific groups of students, we have to ensure that we're making adequate progress with them. So those are the systems that, that we're looking at. But don't worry, we're not going to go through all of them in detail tonight, so take a deep breath. Let's talk a little bit about the system that we are starting, starting in 2018. Next Monday, we're going to start under that system. And one of the things you need to know is I'm terrible at sports metaphors, so, Dr. Kuratin put this in here, I'm not sure I can even explain it, but I'm going to go for it. Basically, we're going to start the game. We think that when we hit a homerun, we've got it all measured out and we know what it's going to be, but it's possible in April or May, we'll get new rules and that homerun really was a foul ball. So I just want you to know that we'll be learning about the rules as the year progresses. I'm going to tell you what we know now, and as things progress and things change, we'll keep you updated. So this year, we'll be under the, the A through F system, and that will be three specific domains. Right now, we're under the index system. We will have three domains next year. We'll have Domain 1, which is the student achievement index, it's not an index, the student achievement domain. We'll have Domain 2, which is the student growth, and we'll have Domain 3, which are, which is closing the achievement gap. Now, notice that, that Index 4 that we used to have, we won't have a Domain 4 on college and career readiness. That will be wrapped into Domain 1. So Domain 1 is going, for elementary and middle school, will be how well we do on STAR, as well as how well we do on college and career readiness. So in other words, we'll receive points for students who approach expectations, students who meet expectations, and students who master expectations, and students who exceed expectation. So that, that college and career for elementary and middle school will be wrapped into Domain 1. The other thing that's really important to remember for high schools in Domain 1 is there are 14, currently 14 criteria that they're going to be looking at. 14 different criteria. Right now, they have four. So they're going from four criteria to 14 criteria in Domain 1. It's going to be a very interesting thing, but we're ready. In Domain 2, which is student or school progress, school progress if we're talking about the district and the campuses, that will have to do with how well the students grow, but the difference there is going to be that this, we will have a comparison group. You know how we have a comparison group now for the distinctions? The comparison group now will be, also be in Domain 2. So, so we'll have our groups of campuses that look like us throughout the state, and comparatively, we need to grow our kids as much as they are, and that will, that will count in Domain 2. So campuses and districts will have to either do well in Domain 1 or Domain 2, and they must do well in Domain 3, which is closing the achievement gap. So if you loosely compare the Domain 3 to our current Index 3, right now, we, we look at our economically disadvantaged and our two groups that may be performing historically not as well. Next year, they will look at all of the subpops, including our special education students who are one-year released, our students who are migrant workers, so they're migrant students. So there are a lot of different criteria they'll be looking at in Domain 3. That is the gist of the new system. So every, this coming year, the district will get an A through F rating. The campuses will not. The campuses will get either the MET standard or improvement required. And then in January of 2019, we will get a what-if, a what-if report, which basically says, if you had had the A through F, this is what you might have scored. And that's, that's where we are right now on that.
Seems pretty cut and dried to me.
Oh yeah, it is.[813.12][813.12](Laughter). Super cut and dry. Right.
So we're starting the game. Starting the game, the rules, if history is an indicator, are likely to change from what we perceive them today.
Yes.
Okay. It's great we have such a full house here to understand the rules under which we operate, so when you read in the paper that we either got something or we didn't get something, you'll understand some of the context behind what that means.
Sure.
Anything else on the basics of Accountability 101? Clear as mud? Okay. The next item.
So now, let's talk about the, our current accountability. Just to review real quickly, we had possible ratings of MET standard or improvement required. Those were the two standards that we could meet. To meet standard, we needed to, to score in the appropriate range in Index 1 and it, or Index 2, and you had to meet Index 3 and 4. And we did, the, the main thing that changed this year were the labels, which that, that was easy enough. So we moved into below grade level, approaches grade level, masters grade level, and exceeds. And we received credit if the student was approaches. So I want to clarify that real quick. It does not mean that the student is not on grade level. It means that they may have had some elements in the test that they, that were not on grade level, but overall, they were approaching grade level. So that's been a confusion, I just wanted to clarify that. But we knew the rules going in, and we were real clear on, on how to play this specific game. So there again are our index accountabilities. There were our cut scores. We had four indexes this time. And then here were the overall results. In Index 1, we had 21 out of 25 campuses that met Index 1, and we had 13 of 25 that improved, came up significantly. We, we had 24 of 25 that met Index 2. 15 of 25 improved. We had 23 of 25 that met Index 3. 15 of 25 improved, and 24 of 25, we're very proud of that one, and 21 of 25 improved. As a district, we also improved in three of the indexes, as you can see there, the student progress. So it really means that we are growing students, our students who have a lot of skill gaps, we are getting them up to grade level. We are closing their performance gaps, and we are getting kids ready in post-secondary The other thing to remember about student achievement, it looks like we didn't make a big growth there, but you also have to remember that they added several new subpops into that category. Some of our most fragile subpops ended up in Index 1 this time, and so the fact that we maintained really is, is a growth. So there are our accountability results. Both high schools met all four indices. In middle school, we had four of the six middle schools met all four indices. One school met three indices and one school only met one indices. In the elementary schools, we had 15 of 17 elementary schools meet all four indices. One school met three indices and one school met only one index. So we do have two campuses that are identified as improvement required this year. That would be Austin Elementary and Dogan Middle School. We did get Griffin Elementary that, that came out, and Jones Elementary came out of improvement required, so we are very proud of that.[1070.23][1070.23](Applause). So we just wanted to show you the progression over the last several years. We started off with 11, went to 9, went to 3 last year, we're down to 2, certainly on a positive trajectory. So let's talk about distinctions. For elementary campuses, they had to have 50% of the distinctions indicators in the top quartile, and again, this was a 40-campus comparison group. And so, obviously, the subject's science, math, ELAR. They had to have it, the top 25% of closing the performance gap, post-secondary readiness, and top 25% in student progress.
Dr. Hanson, could you just unpack what one of these comparison groups looks like?
Sure.
So everybody can kind of understand?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know that it took me a while to kind of wrap my head around who all was in these comparison groups, because I know they're made up of schools from all over the state.
Right. So what they do is they take all of the schools throughout the state, and they find campuses that look similar to the campus that we're being compared to. So they need to have a similar population of English-language learners, similar population of economically disadvantaged, similar demographics related to racial ethnicity, similar demographics relation, related to special education population, and a similar staff number. They also have to have a similar structure as far as pre-K through 5 or K through 5. So they, they don't compare, they wouldn't compare Rice Elementary to a pre-K through 2.
So a school like Rice, who might be one of the higher-performing schools in Tyler ISD, might not receive a distinction from the state because they're in a more competitive quartile?
Right. A school like Rice would be, and I don't know, I'd have to look at their group, but they might have a Lake Collins or an Allen School or a Frisco School.
Okay.
And so, exactly. They, they literally take a matrix and, and find a school that looks similar.
Okay. Thanks.
In our secondary distinctions, the, they had an opportunity to earn seven distinctions because they added social studies in there as one of the core subjects. Middle school had to have 50% of the distinction indicators, and high schools have to have So here are the results. And we had 17 elementary, nine elementary schools received 17 distinctions, and we had three secondary schools receive eight distinctions. And there are the results. So very proud of those. We're going to celebrate those more, more next month. Moore Middle School had five distinctions. Birdwell, Clarkston, and Woods had three distinctions. Robert E. Lee, Bell, and Ross had two distinctions, and Hubbard, Owens, Jones, Pete, and Ramey
Before you go on to this next slide, Dr. Kuratin and Mr. Sanchez, maybe you could speak to the public on the influence of your comparison group and how it pertains to free and reduced lunch and attendance?
So what happens across the state is, is there's a comparison group, and so, good evening, Dr. Crawford, Board President, and the rest of the board. What happens a lot of times is when they put you in a comparison group, they also look at your low SES and the number of individuals or number of parents that have submitted free and reduced lunch applications. And that's going to be key, because I think at times, we as parents are reluctant as a result of either our own economic status and/or our own nationality to submit that kind of data, its financial data, to the schools, and that has an impact on what campus groups were being compared up against. And so it's important to the public as they hear what happens in Tyler ISD and with public education, when it comes to comparison groups, that when those applications are sent home and/or they're being asked to fill them out, that they fill them out, because it gives us a very competitive edge, if you will, and a very comparable edge with schools that are similar to the ones that we have an opportunity to lead in Tyler Independent School District. It also has an influence on the, the status of the, the kids that are on the campuses and the backgrounds by which they come. So it's going to be really important as we move forward that we take a look at what, who we're being mirrored up against, not just locally, but across the state, and that parents and the community understands that we all play a part in that. That also includes the attendance. We realize that in East Texas, we have an opportunity to take vacations at times where other people might not have an opportunity to take vacations, maybe leave early on a holiday, maybe we want to get to the lake, or we want to get to a destination of our choice. But it's important that we realize that also, that also affects our rating and where we are in our comparison groups. Even though we sometimes would like to take a Friday off or come back on a Monday, that actually has a negative effect when we have to be compared against other schools. So again, community, as you're listening in, we are asking that, even though it's a Monday, even though you have the day off, even though it's a Friday and you want to leave early, we need children here. And so that helps us be very, very comparable, and that's all we're asking the state to do, and we're asking our community to do, is give us an opportunity to be comparable with not just our SE, low SES, or just our SES, but also when it comes to attendance. So we're asking that you make sure that your kids are in school every Monday, every Friday, and on Wednesdays.
And the reason I brought, the reason, (laugh) the reason I brought that up is on this distinction list, you would have seen Bonner. Bonner had a heck of a year. Where are you, Zee? There you are. Stand up.[1470.33][1470.33](Applause). Stand up.[1472.33][1472.33](Laughter). I get that all the time. So in saying that, I think that their, one of their percentages, well, I think you said you had 78% free and reduced lunch. We know that Bonner has a higher number of that, but for some reason, it wasn't submitted. Also, I think you were sharing with me, Principal Gazaris, that your attendance was maybe a half a percent off or very close, and that would have tipped you over to be able to qualify for some of these distinctions. So it's a very miniscule thing that can tip you over one way or the other, and I wanted to make sure that we spend a little bit of time here publicly talking about that, because attendance matters, not only just for students, but for staff. Okay.
Mr. Sanchez, do we have, do you have an estimate or a sense for the magnitude of under-reporting of low SES? Are we talking about 5% district-wide? Are we talking about 15% district-wide? Do you have, is there a way to know that?
If, if we go on what we see and what we believe versus what is the data shows us, it's anywhere from 15 to 20%.
Oh wow, okay.
And that would really significantly make a difference on the number of distinctions that our district would receive. And so what happens is that maybe tomorrow or the day after, they're going to post the distinctions, and our community's only going to see the numbers, but they're not going to understand that somewhere, if we would have had anywhere from even 10 to 15% increase in number of applications that were submitted and/or the additional attendance where kids would have been in school, even though they might not have felt not too good, but if they would have been to school and they would have been seen by nurse, the nurse could have done what it is that they're hired to do, then those distinctions would have significantly increased. But without having the raw data, because they don't turn in the applications, and we don't know exactly why they stayed home, but we do have conversations with parents when they say, "Well, their stomach hurt just a little bit." Or, you know, "We just wanted to get out of town early." And we have to understand, and I know we keep driving that point home, but it's important, because it's important to our district, that we become a, a school or a district of distinctions where we can compare ourselves up against anybody regardless of where they are in the state and compete, because that's what our industry's asking us to do, that's what our business sectors is asking us to do, but more importantly, that's what our parents are asking us to do, and so we need the help of their parents at the same time.
One last comment there. Obviously, there are benefits to the family and to the students as well for filing for those benefits. We're focusing on the benefits of the school district. It does result in significant reduced costs for families in Tyler if they do go ahead and...
Right. Because what happens a lot of times, we believe that submitting a free and reduced lunch application automatically puts us in a category financially where we consider low SES. But at times, it may be a lunch or a breakfast at a reduced cost, where we know we feed our kids breakfast, but the lunch might be at a reduced cost. Lunch may be free, as you know, we, we serve our kids breakfast free, so it's about the lunch and being able, because if you remember, we, the, our food services departments delivered over 2 million breakfasts last year, and over...
Lunches. Two million lunches.
Two million lunches.
Million breakfasts.
And 1 million breakfasts, okay? Or the other way around. That's 3 million food opportunities kid had to eat between the two. That's significant, because a lot of times, that may be the only meal children get to eat in that week. So we have to play our part, the entire community needs to play their part in that.
And, and for all you guys out there who aren't familiar with acronyms, just like I wasn't when I jumped on this thing, SES stands for socio-economic status. So lower socio-economic status is what they're referring to.
Any other questions for Dr. Hanson? Comments?
Go ahead and just run through this little slide right here, Doc.
Okay. So Tyler ISD improved in three of the four accountability indices. The number of schools that met standard increased from 22 in 2016 to 23 in 2017, with 21 campuses meeting all four accountability indices. That's really huge. The number of distinctions from 6, from 16 in 2016 to 17 in 2017 for elementary. Campuses obtained distinctions in six of the seven possible categories. And then, of course, we know the 2018 accountability, it's going to be a new system, and we're going to be learning the rules as we go along.
It's a good trajectory. Questions? When I was in sales a long time ago, we had a saying called "Whiff 'em, what's in it for me," or, and as a sales rep, it then quickly became, "What have you done for me lately?" So we're going to celebrate the tremendous success of last year for about another four more days.[1781.16][1781.16](Laughter). And then we'll gather to bring in the new year, and we'll start to climb the mountain all over again. But thank you for this team and to the principals here and to the staff, to all of you watching online. Thank you for all the hard work that led to such a dramatic improvement over the last couple of years at Tyler ISD. couple of years at Tyler ISD. Thank you very much.
Job well done.
Okay, next is special recognitions.
Good evening, board members. Tonight Tyler ISD would like to congratulate our own Financial Service Department for being awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association for the fiscal year ending 2016. This is the 14th year the district has received this award under the leadership of Ms. Tasha Bjork. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Ms. Bjork and Ms. Mary Russell and congratulate them on this achievement. And that concludes our recognitions. Thank you.
Just add to that, our meetings are conducted in open and public, and our financial information at the highest levels of transparency is also available for those who are interested in the financial operations of our district. And thank you, Ms. Bjork, and for your department and all the hard work and for a long history of transparency and accuracy in financial information. Okay, item 10, public hearing on the 2017-2018 budget. So the way this works is we have public comment on our budget. And the public comment is different from our normal public comment section in that the microphone will be open to those who want to talk about our budget. If you approach the microphone and begin to talk about something not related to our budget, then you will be asked to step back from the microphone and the microphone will be given to someone who wants to speak about the budget. So at this time, do we have any public comment on the budget for this next year? Please approach the microphone, identify yourself and where you're from.
Keith Hilliard, right here in Tyler. I have a question on, basically, you're talking about the free breakfast and lunch. I'd like to know what percentage of the students in TISD receive those? And how many do you think more would receive it if they filled out the paperwork? And where did the money come from for those items? I saw in the budget that security was budgeted like 25,000 and it actually was 30,000. It looked like there was, might have been a loss in that category. So if anybody could clarify that, that'd be great.
Ms. Bjork? Can you come to the microphone, please? So let's talk in general about free and reduced lunch and how food service works in Tyler ISD and where in the budget that information is generally housed.
Well, we have a separate budget for food service. And it's around $9 million. It's separate and apart from the general fund. And it is on page, I think John can flash it up there. It's on page 20 in the agenda. And our free and reduced lunches are approximately 70% around that area. And the money that we get from the state or the feds is around 8.7 million.
What percentage of that, just to answer Mr. Hilliard's question, is state and/or feds?
Well, it's considered a federal program.
Federal, okay.
Right. So as far as what we get for people that pay for lunches, it's only around a million dollars. But for federal, we get 8.7.
So if I try and anticipate these follow-on questions, so if we do have 20% of our district not taking advantage of free and reduced lunch, that's roughly 3,500 students in the district for a district of 18,000. And so those students are eating lunch anyway, and they are either bringing their own lunch from home, or they are paying out of pocket. It doesn't seem like that many are paying, but...
No, they're not. They, the majority bring their lunch, but...
So if someone did receive that benefit, we would receive more income from the federal government as a result of that.
Right. And we offer free breakfast in all the schools. So that's all free. So we get a lot on the breakfast. And we would receive more on the lunches if we had more students participating.
Can you comment then on the last, the second to the last line on the bottom of this page, the transfer to the General Operating Fund of $325,000? And just explain to our audience what that number represents.
Okay. What that is, is an indirect cost rate because the general fund, say, we pay all the bills, we do all the payroll, that type of thing, and it's a reimbursement to the general fund for indirect cost at the admin building. In most, in most districts, that does not happen. But our food service department's profitable, so they have the ability to pay that indirect cost back to us.
So this is a break-even budget last year, off the top of your head?
Well, they sometimes do capital projects. They have fund balance of around a million dollars. And they will help participate in the bond also with the kitchens. They have done that in the past and will continue.
Okay.
70, 75% of our students qualify for free reduced lunch. That's our economic status. You know, trying to figure out, Mr. Hilliard, and what he was asking was, what do we anticipate are not filling those out? That's a pretty tough number to guesstimate. So 70, 75%, it fluctuates on the actual rate of how many students actually fill out that free and reduced paperwork from year to year. And we think there's probably more.
Any other public comment on the budget? Thank you, Ms. Bjork. Okay, I'll move to action item A on item 11. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move that the board approve the 2017-2018 budgets as presented in the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Budget is passed. Item B is the adoption of the 2017-2018 tax rate. Any discussion on that item?
Just a comment that this does include the successful referendum of May 6 of this last spring of a three-cent increase on the tax rate on the interest and sinking side of our budget. There's two sides of our budget, maintenance and operations, which is at $1.04, and then the debt service fund budget is going to be the three additional cents up to 3.65. Is that right? Yeah, 3.65.
And the $1.04 is unchanged since a very long time ago? Can't remember how far.
About 2007 or '08, somewhere around there.
Okay, great. Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'll accept a motion on the adoption of the 2017-2018 tax rate.
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Martinez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One of the things we do is we continue to amend our budget to make sure it reflects our last known reality. And so we have the final amended budget for approval of 2016-2017. Any discussion on that item? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I so move.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Washman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, the part you've all been waiting for so nicely. I'm going to read the statement that governs, it's kind of a summary of our policy for how we handle this portion of our meeting. And then I'm going to have just a couple of comments and then we will start. We are now at the scheduled time in our agenda for public comment. The board wishes to hear your thoughts and concerns. As per board policy, all speakers must have submitted a speaker participation form at least 10 minutes prior to the start of our regular session. All registered speakers should have received a card with our guidelines for your presentation. We also ask those in the audience to refrain from responding to the speaker's comments, including cheering and applauding. This will enable the board members to focus their attention entirely on the speaker. Although the board may ask clarifying questions, please be reminded that the board members cannot respond to any comments. Tonight, we had 34 people sign up to speak. The same board policy that I just summarized gives me a couple of options. I can keep us here till about 1:00 in the morning and let everybody have their five minutes. I can try and organize this room into groups, and those groups can decide amongst themselves who among the folks who've signed up would agree to withdraw the request to speak. I see no way to do that in this size room. And as everyone filled out their forms, they also didn't indicate kind of which side of the issue they are on. So the other option I have is I can divide the 30 minutes scheduled for the meeting by 34 and equally allocate the time. I don't know how productive that would be if I did exactly that, so here's what I'm going to do instead. We're going to allocate two minutes per speaker, which more than doubles the amount of time we have allocated to this. And I would ask, as we go on, which often happens in this setting, although we've not had this many people, is that if someone has said exactly what you want to say, maybe in exactly the way you thought you were going to say it, that when your name is called, you do not have to take your two minutes. You have been an excellent crowd, and we appreciate the applause for all the success that we've had. But we're going to enter a portion of the meeting where we don't need any applause. We're going to try and get through this in a very orderly way, and I hope you can express your sentiments in the two minutes. Let me editorialize just briefly. We've seen lots of examples of communities who deal with this issue very poorly. And we all live in Tyler, Texas, because we believe it's a special place. And so as we embark on this conversation, although it's going to be a one-sided conversation tonight where we hear from you, my hope and prayer is that we can do it in a way that is respectful, that is a way that builds up each other and our community instead of tearing us down or tearing apart. And so you who are registered to speak tonight get the first chance to do that in a public forum. So with that being said, two minutes, and I will, I'm going to be fairly ruthless in cutting you off at two minutes, or two minutes can become four minutes and it will become a very late night for us. So I will give you a high sign when you have about 15 seconds to go, and then please wrap that up as close to two minutes as possible. So the first public speaker is Mr. Nick Pacina.
President Hager, Vice President Washman, members of the board, Dr. Crawford, and my fellow Tylerites. I respectfully request the board take the name change of Robert E. Lee High School under consideration in the very near future. There is never a wrong time to do the right thing. There is never a wrong time to do the right thing. My name is Nick Pacina. I'm a local attorney and I love Tyler, Texas. I stand before you today not as a Tyler native and not as a product of Tyler ISD, but as a citizen who believes in the future of this community. I believe in the strength and unity of our city. We recently saw a desegregation order lifted. We came together to the tune of 83% to pass a historic bond for remodeling John Tyler and practically reconstructing Lee. And it's time to take a step that is almost 60 years in the making, and we have an opportunity for a new beginning. While we're moving in this right direction, that hasn't always been the case. Recent national events have reminded us of a notorious past, a history which we have tried to remove ourselves. Unfortunately, Tyler has had a history of putting things off until courts order us to change. We have a major opportunity before us to do the right thing because we have decided it should happen. Changing the name of Robert E. Lee High School is long overdue, and we have an opportunity to start fresh, a new school, a new name. This isn't about external forces or outsiders dictating our local destiny, but this is about our future students, our current students, and our alumni. The name does not make the high school, the people do. And I experienced this up close when I coached the first-ever Tyler ISD mock trial team with students from both high schools. I saw them grow together and work together for a common goal. Those students were six African-American students and four Hispanic students. And I reflected on those 10 students before I came here tonight. Now, Robert E. Lee himself opposed Confederate monuments because he thought it would keep open the sores of war, which he thought should be confined to oblivion. This isn't a black issue or white issue.
Two minutes, Mr. Pacina.
Anyway, there's never a wrong time to do the right thing, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Ron Gleason. And as a way to speed this up, I'll go ahead and call the next speaker up, and if you can sit someplace close to the front. Looks like Cory's not sitting in his chair. We have an open seat right there. And that would be Mr. Bobby Curtis. If you could come to the front, that way we'll keep this moving as quickly as possible. Mr. Gleason?
My thanks to all of you for the time. For the past 20 years, I've worked with Faulkner scholars who were leaving TISD and other nearby school districts to seek college degrees. We awarded over 750 students these scholarships. Most of them were the first in their families to go to college, and all were either African-American or Hispanic. They were not privileged by birth or by wealth, but they were smart. These students and their families gave me a remarkable education. As we worked together and gained trust in one another, I learned just how differently they saw some parts of our culture and our history. Their teaching has made me better, and I believe every one of us would benefit from listening more carefully to neighbors who have long been ignored, especially in this matter. Changing the name of Robert E. Lee won't change history because history resides in books and documentaries and to a lesser extent in popular culture. Naming public facilities isn't history. It is instead a symbolic way to honor a person or an event. Who or what we honor is a message we send to the future. I urge members of the school board to rename Robert E. Lee High School and invest that honor in another more universally positive figure for our children and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis? And Angela Smallwood, if you could come to the front.
I'm going to turn some time back to you. I'm not a public speaker, but I am a concerned citizen. I was in the first class that went all the way through Robert E. Lee. Never really gave Robert E. Lee that much thought that it was that important, but apparently it is. Appreciate someone from out of our city coming in and starting this here up. If we change the name of Robert E. Lee, we've also got to change the name of John Tyler. I'm going to leave these with all of you. I'm going to leave these with all of you learned people. But Robert E. Lee was a famous general. He was a famous general in the US and then became. South. They were defeated and he went back and did great work for his country, which he loved his country. And the National Cemetery is on his plantation. He loved his country and, you know. I'm without words to explain how sick I am that this is happening in my city that I grew up in. But it is. I'm going to leave y'all though, a history of Lee, of Robert E. Lee and also of John Tyler. Okay?
Go hand that to the Board Secretary. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Ms. Smallwood is up. And this is Wes Valerding. Looks like V-A-L-L-E-R-D-I-N-G. Valerding, maybe that's a B, I'm not sure. But that would be up after Ms. Smallwood.
Hi, my name is Angela Smallwood. I'm here not just representing myself as an alumni of Robert E. Lee and John Tyler, but I'm also representing my son and my daughter. My son graduated from Robert E. Lee year before last. My daughter's there right now. When I think of Robert E. Lee, it's the memories. It's the friends that I had. I live in Tyler, I drive by Robert E. Lee, and I still to this day have friendships with many of my fellow classmates from Robert E. Lee, as do my son and daughter. Now, as the gentleman before me said, Robert E. Lee, he was an amazing man. He had slaves that he had inherited. But he said slavery is a great evil. His wife actually taught the slaves how to read. They cared enough to make sure that they were educated and then they freed them. And she got in trouble for that. Now, as an educator myself, I see that as, it's a learning institution. And she actually set a pathway for that when she, when she taught them. I want to read something really quick from Condoleezza Rice, whom I admire greatly. I'm a firm believer in keep your history before you so you don't actually want to rename things that were named for slave owners. I want us to have to look at those names and realize what they did and be able to tell our kids what they did for, for them to have a sense of their own history. She also went on to say that sanitizing, sanitizing history to make you feel better is a bad thing. I really took what she said to heart, especially as I'm watching.
Fifteen seconds.
Especially as I'm watching what's going on and our statues being taken down. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Gary Bayless will be up next. And please tell me your name that I butchered.
Mr. V is so much.
Mr. V, okay, well, I can do that.
Good evening, trustees. It is an honor to address the Board. My name is Wes Valerding. In light of the successful bond election, the time has finally arrived for the Board to change the name of its two high schools. As you know, both of our high schools are named after leaders of the Confederacy. President John Tyler completed his service in eighteen forty-five and returned to Virginia. In subsequent years, he championed the Confederacy. As a Virginia delegate in eighteen sixty-one, he voted for secession complaining of, quote, "the oppression of the Southern slaveholding states." He helped Virginia win admission to the Confederate States of America. He won election to the Confederate House of Representatives. By these means, he donated his prestige and voice to the Southern cause of slavery. As you know, General Robert E. Lee led Confederate Army of Northern Virginia. And at Gettysburg, he nearly succeeded. Your predecessors on the Board named both of Tyler's high schools after leaders of the Confederacy for a reason, and that reason was to teach. To teach the whites and blacks of Tyler and their children that everyone would mind his and her place in the unequal and rigid social structure. I propose that it is now time for Tyler to remove itself from the vestiges of Confederacy. I urge the Board to solicit new names for our schools. Many enlightened citizens, as you know, have walked the streets of Tyler and made it better. Consider the Willie Leaglass High School, Andrew Melontry High School, the Barbara Bass High School, the Kevin Altive High School, the Earl Campbell High School, even the Sandy Duncan High School. Yesterday, Nelson Clyde IV said articulately and courageously, I might add, quote, "This is not about acquiescing to revisionist history, but about moving to a posture of excellence as a community in our messaging and embracing new traditions," end quote. The time has therefore come to remove the Confederacy to our museums and our history books and off the marquees and roofs of our high schools. I respectfully therefore ask the Board to teach a new lesson.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you, sir, for your consideration.
After Mr. Bayless, John Kennedy.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I appreciate all that y'all do for making Tyler a great community and a great school system. A lot of things I've written have already been said and I'm not going to read. But recently, the New York Post did a article when they had quoted PBS NewsHour, NPR, AmerisCollege poll that said sixty-two percent of Americans think that all the statues and memorials of history should stay, while only twenty-seven percent believe that they should be removed because they're offenses to some people. And about Lee, he was an honorable officer and a gentleman in every respect. He led, he wrote to his wife in eighteen fifty-six. In this enlightened age, there are few, I believe. But what we'll acknowledge that slavery is an institution, is a moral and political evil in any country. So to say Lee was a racist is, but is a mistake. And I echo the sentiments. If we changed the name of Robert E. Lee, John Tyler owned slaves, fifty of them at a time. Whereas if Lee did own slaves, I've never heard about it or never read about it. So, but he had an illustrious career, starting as being first in his class at West Point. And he was in the Mexican-American War where he became a hero. And then Lincoln appointed him, wanted him to be Field Commander of the Northern Forces. But Lee denied when Virginia succeeded and, and went on about to do what he did and ended up as the president of Washington and Lee College. So in my opinion, he's an honorable man and the name should stay the same. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Kennedy, we have Suzanne Brady will be up next.
Mr. President and Board of Tyler ISD, which if we go down this road, we may be changing the name of that as well. Because the, the history that I've studied, George Washington had slaves and just about every one of our forefathers. So we're going to go down a road and I believe there's a bigger agenda. And that's a sad thing in this country today that we have an agenda, to me, a liberal agenda of taking every opportunity and seizing every opportunity in order to wipe away, wipe away the Anglo-Saxon, anything to do with the history. George Washington has already been brought up. Tyler Newspaper, change the name of that. We can just keep going because this is just a start. You want to talk about Robert E. Lee, you be the man facing Lincoln. And as you face Lincoln, you're told that you're going to go against your own state. Are you going to go ahead and defend your state of Virginia? Or are you going to go ahead and, head and defend the United States? And he had to make a choice. The man made a choice. Unfortunately, we've also have the other, which makes me mad that we have the KKK and everybody because all they do is take and, and make the situation worse. Because I don't believe in slavery. I don't need anybody in here that does. I deplore racism. I'm a graduate of Robert E. Lee High School. I think it's a sad day in our country that we have people that are so offended by a name of a school that we're going to write. And that's next here in Tyler, Texas, I guess. At least we're doing it the right way here. But that we're going to do those things to get our way. And that's a sad day in this country. And a sad day in Tyler, Texas, which may lose its name in twenty years. Where are we going to stand up to that? Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Brady. And then Craig Gibson will be up next.
Board, thank you for hearing me today. My name's Suzanne Brawley. I only know one of you personally. And that person was in my history classroom for a time. I do want to say one thing. And a lot of people have, have said what I've already said. I'm a history person. But one thing that I don't think has been said, or at least I didn't hear it, was that Robert E. Lee freed his slaves and John Tyler kept his until he died. John Tyler had already, had always been against secession. But once it occurred, he was elected to the Confederate government and gave Robert E. Lee orders, or would have had he not died. So if we're going to change Robert E. Lee, let's change John Tyler. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank the Board for taking the time to listen to the public here. My name's Craig Gibson. Just a couple of comments real quick. There was a young man who was born in Hill Country and went down to the valley and became a school teacher for a couple of years and saw a bunch of Hispanic students down, poor students down the valley. He ended up becoming a United States Senator and became our president, Lyndon Bateman Johnson. And in nineteen sixty-four, when they, when he was encouraged to pass the Civil Rights Act, he famously remarked that, "We're going to lose the South for a generation," the Democrats. And they did. I say that because sometimes events fall into place in history and how we react to them tells us a lot about who we are and where we're going and where we've been. This is a, what we might call a perfect storm. And this is an opportunity to change the name of Robert E. Lee High School. Doing the popular thing sometimes isn't always right. And doing the right thing isn't always popular. I encourage the Board to seriously consider changing the name of Robert E. Lee High School. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Bruckwicki. And then next up would be Marsha Daughtry.
Thank you. I've lived here in Tyler for twenty-seven years. I'm not a native. I'm, I've been an educator for over thirty years. I do know that it's very important that every student who is in my classroom feel empowered, feel a part of the classroom community. My only child graduated from Lee in twenty-eleven. He had great experiences at Andy Woods and Moore Middle School, but it was a little dicier at Lee and he would come home and he would talk to me about the tension. I attended Jefferson Davis Elementary School in Dallas from nineteen sixty-eight to nineteen seventy-three. I had a good experience there. Not so much later when I was going to school in Dallas and we were under desegregation orders. In nineteen ninety-nine, the Oak Cliff community came forward and asked to change the name of Jefferson Davis Elementary School. And I, I would like to think that they did it well. It's, it's still not Jeff Davis Elementary. When I look back at my experience, I went to Jeff Davis and I always will have gone there. And my son will always be a Lee graduate. You guys who grew, grew up here, you'll be Lee graduates, John Tyler graduates. Some of you know people who went to Tyler High School. And so the city survived that change as well. Lee was built in the late nineteen fifties. Not so much in celebration of the Confederacy, but perhaps as a statement to a woman named Rosa Parks, who was arrested for not giving up her bus seat. This is a great opportunity. I urge you to take this opportunity in hand.
Fifteen seconds.
And rename the schools, especially Robert E. Lee, but in listening today, perhaps John Tyler as well.
Thank you. Next is Marsha Daughtry and after that is Karen Wilkerson.
Hello, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Marsha Daughtry. I am in favor of retaining the name of the Robert Lee, E. Lee High School. The Lee family made considerable contributions to establishing this country and the state of Texas. They were original Virginia colonists in the sixteen hundreds. Lee's father served with General Washington in the Revolutionary War, even delivered the eulogy at President Washington's funeral. Robert E. Lee served with distinction along with Ulysses S. Grant in the Mexican-American War. Lee served the Second Cavalry protecting early Texas settlers from Indian attacks. Robert E. Lee, as well as other heroes, represent American virtues, duty, valor, and sacrifice. They transcend race, color, and political ideology. I ask the question, why are we allowing outside groups to politically agitate the stable community? Changing names of buildings and tearing down statues is all a means to a Marxist end. The intention is to transform America by transforming our history. I say, let the name Lee remain on our schools. Don't let extremists on either side destroy the virtues the name stands for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After Ms., after Ms. Wilkerson, be Mr. Richard Blake.
My name is Karen Wilkerson. I'm a resident of Tyler and a taxpayer here. I appreciate the time from the school board and staffers and, and from all the others assembled here tonight. I am a graduate and a proud one of Robert E. Lee High School, class of sixty-eight. I was a student there when the school had that big flag, sang those songs, fired that cannon, and celebrated all the pomp and, and that accompanied all those symbols. Perhaps I was naive and looking back, I am sure that I was, in thinking that what we celebrated was part of some heralded past, steeped in what we were all taught was the cultural heritage of the South and its faded but not forgotten glory. Since those days, I have reflected often on what it must be like for students who attend my alma mater now. They likely cannot comprehend what my years at Lee were like almost fifty years ago. It was a time of great innocence combined with enormous upheaval. There were bad feelings, but many of them seemed to fade in time. The events in Charlottesville ten days ago have made it painfully clear that those feelings still persist with some factions in our nation. We remain saddled with the ghost of a past which haunts us still, wielded like a weapon in the hearts and hands of those who would choose not to move forward, instead clinging to the shreds of a bygone era romanticized, its horrors minimized and its honors tarnished. Over time, the real truth about the old South has been revealed.
Fifteen seconds.
And while it is not pretty, we must see it for what it is. When I go to my class reunions now, I wince when I see those names and symbols everywhere, on invitations, on name tags, on cocktail napkins and the little flags on toothpicks poked into hors d'oeuvres and cupcakes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Blake, followed by Mr. Steve Graham.
Thank you. About half of mine has already been X-ed out because it's already been said. I believe I agree with one gentleman who said, or the lady that said, "The issue here, I believe, is that with the tearing down of statues, removing headstones, changing building names is a behind-the-scenes orchestrated attempt to divide the people of this country, pitting black versus white, rich versus poor, gay versus straight, conservative versus liberal, and so on and so forth." I believe it was Jesus that said, "Every kingdom divided against itself is brought to destruction. Every city or house divided against itself will not stand." It would be wise for us to heed these words. We already mentioned what John Tyler did with slavery, what Robert E. Lee may or may not have done. George Washington owned slaves. I would add Thomas Jefferson, a major contributor to the Constitution, owned slaves. Abraham Lincoln, who everybody thinks was one of our greatest presidents, once considered rounding up all the black slaves and shipping them to Liberia. So should we tear down every single monument and remove them from the face of our currency? Where will it end? Now I even hear that in Virginia, there's a group that wants to remove a Confederate statue and replace it with a rapper by the name of Missy Elliott, who I admit I've never heard of. When will enough be enough? Probably never. There will always be people who will do or say things that will be offensive to someone. What will be the outcome of this and other largely symbolic erasers of history? Will students at Robert E. Lee be better students? Will Tyler then automatically become a better place to live? Will bigoted racist people? Will bigoted racist people suddenly become more racially tolerant? I say the answer to that is no. History is what it is: the good, the bad, and the ugly. Instead of trying to symbolically change or even erase it, we should do everything we can to build on the good and everything possible to avoid repeating the bad. My hope is that this board and the citizens of Tyler and Smith County will rise above this and other divisive issues and set an example that hopefully others will follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Graham, followed by Sarah Back. I apologize for all these names. Some of you have doctor's handwriting, not to offend the doctors in the room, but-
Good evening. My name is Steve Graham. I am a parent of a Robert E. Lee student and a parent of a Robert E. Lee graduate. I have friends in Tyler on both sides of this argument, very smart people on both sides. And it's doubtful that I can say anything that's going to persuade them one way or another. But I would ask that the people of Tyler reach out across to those who think differently than them. I think that this has potential to be a very divisive issue, or it can be one that we grow and learn more about each other and our understanding of our beliefs. Robert E. Lee has been mentioned as a very admirable man. I think just about everyone would agree with that. I think the question becomes, why do we feel it's important to keep his name? And when you think about what Robert E. Lee did, it's understandable. But when you see that Robert E. Lee is now combined with the Confederate flag and supported and cheered together with the flag by white supremacists, he has now become a symbol, I believe, of oppression to a certain portion of our population, and we have to recognize that. I was born in Texas, raised in Arkansas, and got back to Texas as quickly as I could. In moving here, my neighbor actually came from Tyler, and she talked about how friendly the people were and what a wonderful place Tyler was, but she also told me that in moving here, I would be stepping back 20 years in race relations and segregation. And she was absolutely right. I saw it in the company I went to work for. I saw it in the neighborhoods. And since then, I've been here now 21 years, and I've seen great growth in that. And I would ask the people of Tyler, let's make a decision in changing the name to move forward. We have a great opportunity here-
Fifteen seconds.
-but I would also ask that we talk to our neighbors and understand both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, followed by DG Montalvo.
I want to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to speak. I was in the first graduating class of Robert E. Lee and John Tyler, and it had been Tyler High School up until that time. We have all of our reunions together, and we had some wonderful times at Robert E. Lee and John Tyler. And we still speak, and to me, there is a saying, and it goes like this, "Those who fail to remember history are doomed to repeat it." And that's said a lot of times, and I think there's a lot to that. It bothers me a lot that people are still arguing race. I mean, I haven't had any problem with it. I mean, I don't have a problem with other people, cultures, but to deface and tear down and knock down beautiful statues like in New Orleans, that's just wrong. That's just wrong. And God has a reason for allowing things to happen. We may never understand His wisdom, but we simply have to trust His will. And have you even thought of the millions and millions of dollars it's going to cost to change everything? If we change Robert E. Lee-
Fifteen seconds.
-we've got to change John Tyler. Change John Tyler, we've got to change Tyler. It never ends. Please consider, history is something that happens, and we need to live with it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Montalvo, followed by Ash Tao O'Vetts III.
Thank you, board, for this opportunity to come before you and speak. Thank you, audience. There's one thing that's been missing from this entire process of talking about race relations tonight and Robert E. Lee being renamed. And what's missing is what I want to concentrate on tonight, and it really is about creating a community of tenderness. Did you hear that? A community of tenderness. Right now, in our city, right now in this room, there are people divided because they don't understand each other's culture. They don't understand each other's backgrounds. They don't understand the stories behind them that go back generations on either side of this issue. And what I want the board to consider very deeply is what can we do to create the kind of culture and society that matters, where we can actually build a better Tyler, where we can live, work, and play more united as one? Because ultimately, everyone is talking about historical markers, things in the past, but they're not talking about what really matters most. What makes Tyler a Rose City, what makes Tyler a beautiful place, is the people. And for the sake of our children, for the sake of the future, as Clyde said in the paper, let's rename the school so that we can begin the process of racial healing-
Fifteen seconds.
...and racial reconciliation. We haven't done that yet, but we have that opportunity, and it rests with you and on your shoulders, and I hope you do the right thing.
Thank you. Ashton, followed by Delia Gray.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said tonight, but I would like to say again, in John Tyler, if you're going to change Lee, you have to change Tyler because of that. You also have to change some others. Hubbard was a Confederate Colonel. We have one. He's a slave owner. Bonner and Douglas were Confederate soldiers. And obviously, we have schools named after them. And you said you're changing Robert E. Lee because it's being replaced, you're also replacing most of John Tyler. The whole trouble with this is those that destroy history have to relearn it, as one person said. We're in a very dangerous time in this country. I urge you not to do it. It's where does it stop? And cities, if you look at, we have nothing to do with changing names in the city, but Chilton, Beckham, Irwin, Ferguson, there are dozens of streets in this city that are named after Confederates. You know, where do you start? And again, with Tyler, I would assume that the people who want to change this will be consistent and start a petition to change the name of Tyler because that's after a segregationist and a member of the Confederate Congress. I urge you to look carefully on this and not change the name. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gray, followed by RW Moore.
I'm Delia Gray. Thank y'all for giving me this opportunity to present my side. I am the mother of a John Tyler graduate, a graduate. I'm also an aunt of a John Tyler attendee and a sister of a Robert E. Lee dropout. So-
I'm sure she's glad.
In our pledge, it says, "One nation under God." And if removing offensive school names helps to make us one nation under God, then that is what should be done. Okay. Okay. Is naming a school Charles Manson or Adolf Hitler offensive to people? Because to some people, they're heroes. When they did the exact same thing that Robert E. Lee did, they killed people. It is not about the slavery of it, it's about the human beings that they took. Even though they were slaves, they were still human beings. So I urge you, I urge you to change the name Robert E. Lee, John Tyler. Take a walk in someone else's shoes who have been there, who it offended. Then you'll understand why it means so much to change the name of the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, followed by Sarah Wagner.
I'd like to thank the board. My name is RW Moore. Lady earlier said that history, if you don't remember your history, you're doomed to repeat it. Mark Twain said, "History does not repeat itself." It does rhyme. That's something to remember. Also, changing names of things, just because we don't like the names doesn't make any difference. I personally don't think we should change it. Why keep it? That's the reasons to keep it are just as strong as some may think to change it. Monuments are destroyed. We've seen the Taliban destroy monuments. I would like to suggest that if you do change the name of Robert E. Lee, that you change it to Winston Smith Memorial High School.
Thank you. Let's take a pause here. We are about halfway through, and I'd like to commend the audience for generally being very quiet. I think one of the things that would help is, speakers, if you will, as the policy says, direct your comments to the board. You're not speaking to the audience. There's plenty of cameras here to broadcast you all over creation, so don't feel like you have to turn around for other people to see you, but I think that will help those in the audience to continue to stay quiet if someone has not turned directly to speak them. So Ms. Wagner, followed by Pearlie Henderson.
Hi. My name is Sarah Back. I think we got switched. I think Ms. Wagner spoke. And I can't say anything much better than what's been said here already. The one thing that hasn't been said, I am a member of this community. I pay taxes in Tyler. I'm a homeschooler. I homeschool my children, and I have young children. But again, I am a member of this community and pay taxes, and the thing that hasn't really been mentioned is, you know, I have to talk to my kids about history. This year in our homeschool is American history. And, you know, when we were working on our curriculum for this year, it's, you know, war after war after war. I mean, the Indian War, the War of 1812, the Civil War, the World Wars, the Korean, Vietnam after 9/11. And I want to be able to talk to my kids about reconciliation, and that's the most important thing to me. That's my heart. And we see already, I mean, I've been keeping up with it, and it is about 50/50 what people think here. So that tells you, we are not reconciled. There is not unity here. So I would just ask that there is a vote on this issue, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So Henderson, followed by Chase B. Tompkins.
Good evening, board. My name is Pearlie Henderson, longtime member of Smith County. Normally, during the weeks and months, I wear several caps. I chose to wear this cap today, United States Army, where I served for a couple of years. Over the past year, I also substitute, teaching in John Tyler as well as Robert E. Lee. And it's amazing to see how kids work together because, to me, that's what it's all about, the kids and the students. They have proven to me that they can work together and love to work together. This morning, I watched the eclipse. God's doing. People enjoyed it all over the world, drove hundreds and thousands of miles, but it's all because of God's movement, not man. You should realize that the school is all about the students. I'd like for you, if you would, just take a look around in the area in which you're sitting, and see how many young people are here, students. It always amazes me because that's what it's about. What we think and live will soon be fading out, and they will be the person who's in charge of this future.
Fifteen seconds.
And to me, the kids, it doesn't matter what the name schools are, they love to work together.
Thank you. Mr. Tompkins, followed by Aubrey Burge.
Howdy, y'all. My name is Chase B. Tompkins. I'd like to thank y'all for giving me some time today. I'm an Air Force veteran, a graduate of UT Tyler, and a local construction man. The first step of any problem is acknowledging that there is one. Racism is real, it's live and well, and it is a systemic issue. And I am not here to debate the past, the merits nor criticisms of Robert E. Lee. Instead, I would urge us to look forwards, not of the people we were, but of the people that we wish to be. You see, there's racism inside of me, and there's a chance that it may be inside of you, no matter how small. It exists on a subconscious level, bred by generations and encouraged by a system of pride. I don't know that I will be ever cured of this hateful disease, but I do firmly believe that we can create a more perfect union that allows our future generations to thrive where we have faltered. See, I do not believe that a name change will solve all of our problems, but I think it's a pretty darn good start. You see, I can think of countless engineers, scientists, and artists that deserve the honor of a public institution name, and I think it's good for us to encourage our young folk alike to become these things. So, in conclusion, I believe in a future where we are more kind, accepting, and moral. But we have to make that happen, and that can start here, and that can start with all of you, and I trust all of you to do the right thing. Please change the name of Robert E. Lee High School.
Thank you. Mr. Burge, followed by Jacob Lindsay. I'm sorry, Aubrey. Ms. Burge.
Thank you. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak. My name is Aubrey Burge. I'm from Southern California. I graduated from UT Tyler with a bachelor's degree in history. I worked at the Smith County Historical Society, and my senior thesis for my major was naming the naming of Robert E. Lee High School. So here's a little story about how Robert E. Lee High School got its name. When the Board of Education decided that they needed a second high school, it actually took them three months to come up with the name of Robert E. Lee. And so that process went by. On the September board meeting, there was no name. The October board meeting came up with naming the new and future high schools by geographic location within the city, but the November board meeting said that was a bad idea because it would become too confusing and they could run out of names potentially. The Board of Education then decided that the students themselves would choose what they wanted the name of their new high school to be, and they compiled a list of over 15 names, and there was one Elvis Presley, fun fact, that did manage to stay on the list. The December board meeting chose the official names by taking three ballots. For the first ballot, each board member chose their top three favorites, bringing the list of 50 down to nine. For the second ballot, the board member chose from those nine, bringing it down to three. Finally, the last ballot resulted in the unanimous winner, which was Robert E. Lee. Keeping in line with the name Robert E. Lee, the mascot became the Rebels. The Confederate battle flag was used as symbolism throughout the school, and there was a cannon operated by students in full Confederate uniform at football games. Not only is the symbolism too theme-y, but it, I lost my spot, sorry. Not is it too theme-y, but Robert E. Lee High School was built as and intended to remain a white high school when it first opened in the 50s. After the integration of the Tyler School System-
Fifteen seconds.
I'm sorry?
Fifteen seconds.
Darn it. Okay. I don't have a formal stance on this issue, however, I do believe that it is in the school's best interest for the students to decide themselves. And I would like to remind y'all that these students have to continue- that these students have to continue to attend this high school regardless of the outcome. So in honor of the tradition of the students suggesting...
Time's up.
Let's students vote.
Yeah. Please give us a copy of your thesis. You can deliver it to the Board Secretary. Bye. Okay. You can find it on hername, gina.org, at TylerISD.org. That's her email, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry that I just broadcast your email all over cyberspace.
Trust me, everyone already knows it.
Okay, we are halfway there. Thank you for hanging in with us. Let's see, Jacob Lindsay, followed by Justin Reese.
Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jacob Lindsay. I am from Tyler. I was born at Glenwood Hospital, Tyler Community Hospital on North Glenwood, and I've lived in and around Tyler my whole life, and I now have three Tyler ISD students, so this is not coming from an outside element. I am part of this community, and I am speaking in support of changing the name. I think it'd be a good idea. I also want to say that I think Robert E. Lee was a complex man. There's a lot, I think, that we can learn about him. I don't think that changing the name of the high school is erasing history. Really what this comes down to, down to, to me, is by naming our high school Robert E. Lee, I don't think we're doing that so that we can remember him as a historical figure. I think we're doing it so we can reminisce about what he stood for. And like I said, he was a, was an interesting person. There's a lot to know about him. He played a very pivotal role in our nation's history. We all know that, but that doesn't change the fact that he did fight for the right to own people as slaves, and I think we have to consider that today. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Reese, followed by Kristen Baldwin.
Thank you all very much. My name is Justin Reese, and the board, y'all stated earlier that you wanted to focus on student achievement and not be drawn into a distracting national political debate. Like y'all, I agree with that, and I want our schools to be places of learning and not political chess pieces, which is actually why I think changing the name is absolutely the right way forward. A few years ago, I might have agreed that the name Robert E. Lee was a complicated monument to a complicated man in a dark, complicated era of our history. I might have thought that it was a monument to states' rights, or perhaps to some loyal and devoted, but ultimately misguided, local veterans, but I would have been wrong and at odds with history, and I must thank the patience and brilliance of primarily historians of color for correcting me. While General Lee had some honorable attributes, the fact remains that he led a violent and failed opposition against the United States, which killed more Americans than any other war, and which primary motivation was the continued enslavement of our brothers and sisters of color. That alone should be enough, but there's also the context in which the school was named. This monument, for the name is a monument itself, was erected during the civil rights era in spiritual opposition to desegregation. General Lee led a war against emancipation, and this banner was raised as a war against equality. To honor that heritage is to take sides with that part of our dark history. We don't need monuments to our sins to properly learn from them. Nobody is trying to steal our heritage. We're just asking that we stop honoring the parts that belong in the history books, that we wear as our identity, reminders of the best of us, not our darkest hours. We can't ignore this opportunity to address a deep and unhealed wound in our country and community. I don't like the tenor of the phrase, "You're either with us or against us," but I can't think of a simpler way to say, "When a moment presents itself to undo a wrong decision, opposing that is making the wrong decision all over again." In this case, inaction is complicity, and continuing to wear the name Robert E. Lee is making a new political statement. Let's fix that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Baldwin, followed by Kinsley Stewart.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. I think I bring a little bit different perspective tonight, so I don't want to repeat anything that's already been said, but I do remember my time on the school board. One of the things that we worked really hard at was keeping the students' and academic achievement at the center of all the decisions that we were making. I'm here on behalf of my family. My husband has brought some real clarity to this issue, and I really wanted to share his thoughts. He wasn't, he's not here this evening. Something a little bit different than what we've heard. Bill's an attorney in town. He's a retired Assistant U.S. Attorney, worked for the Department of Justice his entire career. I have three sons, all graduated from Robert E. Lee, and we've been speaking with them over the last week or so. Alex is a PhD student at the University of Southern California, and, which is a very international community. His cohorts have been shocked when he's told them that he's gone to a school named Robert E. Lee. They perceive the name to be disrespect, or to be a representation of a time during the civil rights times. Matthew is a Baylor grad, and he's currently in the Navy serving, and he recently talked to some of his sailor friends, and again, they were just very surprised that he went to a school named Robert E. Lee. Kevin, quite honestly, he's at the University of Arkansas. He doesn't really care what the name is. He's really more concerned about the school community. He loved Robert E. Lee, and he's really more interested in the educational opportunities. He really wants more attention placed on student engagement and less on what the adults think is important. And I'd like to quote my husband's thoughts on this matter.
Fifteen seconds.
My point is very simple. Any emotional argument needs to be cast aside and simply consider what is in the best interest of our kids going forward. I've advised our boys to stay REL and not the full name. Even though we know our community and school, there are those who will judge simply based on the name.
Time's up.
Do we risk a graduate's admission to college, scholarships consideration, or job interviews because of ignorance?
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
Or time? Thank you.
Kinsley Stewart, followed by Mark Reimers.
Board trustees, thank you for this opportunity. I'm not from Tyler. I came here just three years ago, and I love what I came to. I like the small-town feel of Tyler. But this change, it's very concerning. If you're going to change Tyler, or excuse me, Robert E. Lee, you're going to have to change John Tyler and Rice Elementary, named after a Confederate soldier. As has been said earlier, where does it stop? There was a recent newspaper article written by somebody from the Tyler, Tyler paper, and I thought that was the epitome of hypocrisy. For someone to write that article telling you to change the name of Lee while their newspaper still bears the name of Tyler. Now, while what I'm about to say next doesn't apply locally here per se, but nationwide, what we see are Democrats erasing symbols of slavery so that everyone else doesn't remember that it was the Democrats who started slavery. Thank you.
Mark Reimers, followed by Dale Tomasoff.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Mark Reimers. I live in Flint, Texas. I encourage this body to resist the destructive political correctness that is attempting to erase our history, good and bad. Keep the name. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Tomasoff, followed by Mitzi Rusk.
As we all know, the healing of racial tensions in our country has been very slow. As a Christian, I believe we should do all we can to heal these wounds. The fact that racism is still so fresh in the South particularly is no doubt the result of perpetuating the idea of the glorious Confederacy as the good old days rather than the shameful dark days it really was. That's why I support removing the name Robert E. Lee from our high school. His name is a reminder of the shameful days of racial oppression and hatred in our nation's past. We are revising history if we remember that time fondly. By honoring General Lee, we're saying that we sympathize with the cause that he fought for. Is that the message that Tyler wants to give? Do we really want our black and Hispanic students to think that we believe in the supremacy of the white race by honoring this Confederate leader? If General Lee won the war, these black students would still be slaves. Do we really want to honor that? Do you think Germans tolerate statues of Adolf Hitler and the public display of Nazi flags? Even we would be outraged if they did. Instead, they keep them in a museum where they belong. Even General Lee himself was worried that by keeping symbols of the Confederacy alive, it would keep the divisions alive. That's why the University of Texas in Austin just today removed four Confederate statues from their campus. If we continue calling this school by the name Robert E. Lee, we tell the world that we are on the wrong side of history, that we're proud of the good old days of slavery, plantations, and cotton. We cannot continue to honor the sins of our past. If we really want to contribute to racial reconciliation and show all our neighbors that we love them, we will change the name of our school.
Thank you. Mitzi Rusk, followed by Wayne Jones.
I'd like to thank the trustees for hearing me today. I appreciate this peaceful opportunity to come and speak at your microphone, and everyone's cooperation is wonderful. I'm a citizen here in Tyler, a taxpayer, a volunteer, a wife, a gardener, I ride horses. I'm also married to a wonderful man who is a direct descendant of Thomas J. Rusk. If I have your attention, you know that Thomas J. Rusk is a well-known Texas hero, but did you know that he went on to serve the United States Senate? He did not stay in the past. He did everything he could to move Texas forward into the future. I'm here to ask for your attention that a name change could open Tyler to new dreams, visions, and opportunities. This is not about subtraction. I'm not here to erase Robert E. Lee's history, Thomas J. Rusk's, or anybody else that we consider a Texas hero, but it's time to move forward in a new way. There is a reason that people spend millions of dollars in advertising for names. Names have meaning, and words have power. I'd like to respectfully request that you engage in a thoughtful process for Tyler's future students and our community, and thank you very much for your listening ears.
Thank you. Wayne Jones, followed by Michael Tolbert.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wayne Jones. I've been a resident of Tyler 33 years. I'm a TSIID taxpayer for 32 years. Both of my children are Robert E. Lee graduates. My late wife was a teacher in TISD at Bonner. I'm here to oppose the proposed name change. Where does this stop? Abraham Lincoln defended slaves. I read yesterday where a statue of him was burned in Chicago. Where does this stop? Where does this cultural cleansing stop? I'm here to encourage you. When my daughter graduated from Robert E. Lee in 2014, her school was unaccredited. Let's concentrate on improving our schools. Let's concentrate on spending these, this money, this $5,000 a year that I pay in taxes on educating our children. Confederate veterans are recognized veterans of the United States of America. I don't know whether people in this room know that or not, but they are, by act of Let's move ahead, yes, but we don't have to change everything. We don't have to culturally cleanse this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert, followed by Antonio Valtierra.
My name is Michael Tolbert. My family's been in Smith County for over 100 years. I have a child in Tyler ISD. I care about this issue because of him. On the past star test, he got a master's in math. He's consistently been the top reader in his class. He plays in the band and plays the recorder. He's the best in his school on that, and I'll tell you why those things matter. I favor the name change for the schools to be remodeled, to be changed for the following reasons. To the question of whether the name of the school should be changed, there is one issue that should be priority. How does and will the name change affect the learning experience of all of the students who will attend Tyler ISD high schools? When Mr. Martinez opened the meeting, he said a prayer, and one thing I consistently hear with prayers is mentions of love, mercy, compassion, and we talk about those things consistently because we say that those are the values that we cherish. First, I want to talk about facts, truth, and honesty. Daniel Patrick Moynihan said that everyone is entitled to their own opinions, but they are not entitled to their own facts. We've heard a lot of opinions here, and I hope that you all can distinguish between facts and opinions. Every single student deserves to get a factual, factually accurate and unbiased account of history so that the lessons to be learned from said history are true and of the highest integrity. Presenting a false account of history to further the selfish agenda of a teacher, an instructor, or a segment of the community does our students a disservice, as this is the definition of rewriting history. The leaders of the secession of the southern slaveholding states made their reasons abundantly clear in documents such as the Declaration of Causes, which impel the state of Texas to secede from the Federal Union. The Vice President of the Confederacy made their reasons abundantly clear in the Cornerstone Speech. There can be no ambiguity as to the cause, motives, and intentions for which the seceding states waged the Civil War. The actions of the Confederacy were an act of treason, the definition of which is the crime of betraying one's country, especially by attempts to kill the sovereign or overthrow the government. We talk about modeling desired behavior. The values of the Confederacy are, when we erect monuments and name things after them, we're saying that those are values that we cherish, and they're not. Thank you.
Antonio Valtierra, followed by Brooks Melton.
Good evening. My name is Antonio Valtierra, and I am a proud alumni of Bonner Elementary, more MST Magnet School, as well as Robert E. Lee High School, and I graduated class of 2012. I first want to start off by thanking all of educators, administrators, as well as my peers and families for allowing me to have this platform and an indication that I value so much to this day. With that being said, I bring up the subject of renaming Robert E. Lee High School. I read the following. Changes to schools' names are not unprecedented. Texas has in recent years seen changes to names of at least 10 public high schools, including Houston Independent School District, own Robert E. Lee High School. Considering these initiatives happening in other parts of the state and country, we must consider what maintaining Robert E. Lee High School would mean for Tyler. From a more practical standpoint, we should think about our students and alumni. If our goals are to promote scholarship, our athletics, our band and orchestra, we need to strive as a district to instill in our students a pride in their school that they may carry with them as they cross county and state lines to attend college. And if we truly seek to create limitless opportunities for our graduates, then we must consider the connotation of the text that bleeds onto their transcripts and diplomas. We cannot ignore how the shift in our country's sentiment towards Confederate figures will affect our high school's image. In the light of this, we propose to year revision to our high school's name. Tyler has no shortage of honorable men and women throughout the years that can now replace Lee. We urge you, distinguished Board of Trustees, to reconsider the impact of the issue for future generations of TISD graduates and permanently rename Robert E. Lee High School. Thank you, and this letter is written by Sonia Montejano, Leslie Reyna, Matt Gashanis, Alicia Barrett, Melissa Salgado, Marina Martinez, Antonio Valtierra, and Erin Murphy. We all graduated class of 2012. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooks Melton, followed by Sarah Bean.
I'd like to thank the board today for allowing us the opportunity to speak. I am 17 years old, and I'm a high school here in Tyler, a high school student here in Tyler, Texas. I've heard many people come up to this podium and talk about one side or the other, but I would like to talk and represent my generation and the kids that attend Tyler ISD, private schools, parochial schools, every school here in Tyler, Texas. I respectfully respect the opinions of everyone gathered in this room. I advise the board not to change the name of Robert E. Lee High School. I'm a proud member of the Tyler family that has been here for close to 80 years. My parents both attended Robert E. Lee High School, aunts, uncles, and numerous other family members. This city has a large history and heritage that is intertwined with both Texas history, the history of our country, and the history of the South. While we may not all agree on our certain perspectives of history, the truth is the truth on what has happened in the past years as far as desegregation and everything that's taken place. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I'd like to advise the board that this... I'd like to advise the board that this decision, whether it be made out of fear for people coming into our beautiful city and terrorizing it, I would like to say that no one would have the guts to come and mess up anything in Tyler, Texas. I'd like to see them try. But most importantly, regarding this issue, whether or not we change the name of this school, my hope and my prayer is that God keeps us united and keeps this a peaceful city, and that God may let Tyler prosper for years and years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Bean followed by Alan Brown.
My name's Sarah Bean. I am a retired Tyler teacher and a history buff. When we moved to Tyler, I was so impressed with the history of the area and the fact that so many people of all races were interested in working with the area to preserve the history. My concern as far as changing names is that I believe that our youth in this country need heroes. They need people they can look up to. If you change the name of a school, who are you named after? There's going to be someone, plenty of people, that disagree with whoever you name it after. I mean, you could name it after the world's greatest minister, and there would be people who would object. Robert E. Lee had so many wonderful qualities, and the fact that he served as a Confederate general is only one aspect of his life. I have a little book here. The title is History of the Life of Reverend William Mc. Lee, Body Servant of General Robert E. Lee. And I think I've lost my place in here. There was one paragraph I wanted to read to you that he told about serving Robert E. Lee. Here it is. He was born a slave, and he served Robert E. Lee before the war, during the war, and after the war. He said, "I was raised by one of the greatest men in the world. There was never one born of a woman greater than General Robert E. Lee, according to my judgment. All of his servants were set free 10 years before the war, but all remained on the plantation until after the surrender." He loved Reverend, he loved Robert E. Lee, and Robert E. Lee loved him, as he did all of his servants. He had wonderful qualities. I've read much about him, as I've read about the war between the states and the leaders on both sides. I've never read anything written by anyone who knew the man that said anything bad about him. He's someone that the students definitely could look up to.
Thank you very much. Alan Brown followed by Govinda Das.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for your service to our community. My name is Alan Brown, and I'm a retired Army officer and a Vietnam veteran. And like General Lee, I know persecution from my military service by the same people who want to erase all evidence of those who lost the war 160 years ago. This war on American history, American heritage, and culture is at stake here. A vote to change the name of Lee High School will encourage the iconoclastic bigotry with even more assaults on American culture. For example, Al Sharpton has already spoken out against the Jefferson Memorial in DC, and for 56 years, the University of Southern California has had a statue of the college horse mascot, which is seen at home games. The mascot's name is Traveler, which is similar to General Lee's horse. Well, the statue is being attacked now on the campus because these iconoclasts think that horses can be racist too. And as mentioned before, Lincoln Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial in DC and the bust of Lincoln in Chicago has been vandalized, and because Lincoln was a racist as well, according to these same iconoclasts. Tyler City Streets, a graveyard monument, and more will be attacked next. This tyranny of the minority must be stopped now, and we've got to stop fighting a war that was already settled 160 years ago. And incidentally, as mentioned before, General Lee not only freed his slaves, but General Grant kept his slaves while General Lee's were freed, so I guess the Union officers should be next.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, thank you for your service as well. Govinda Das followed by Ronald Perdue.
Govinda Das, I am an alumni and a future educator, and one of the big things that comes to mind when we talk about changing the names of the school is putting a focus on the students. For some, Robert E. Lee is a man who fought for the institution of slavery, and that's something some people don't enjoy. For others, they view Lee not as a slave owner or Confederate general, but as someone who represents honor, chivalry, and now being not that good at football. But our main issue today is when coming when changing the name is what really brings to light to the students of Robert E. Lee. My freshman year, a group of seniors did a prank where they rolled black rabbits up the flagpole with the Confederate flag. The imagery was very clear in what it represented. Although it was condemned and may be considered by just one student's actions, I do remember the whispers in the hallway as people thought, "Man, that prank sure was funny." The reality is, no matter what we choose, changing the name, it is going to cause students to become more divided than they have ever been. That was in 2012. In 2017, in our political climate, we need to see that our students should be able to be represented. We have one of the most diverse school districts that I think I've ever seen Tyler ISD been, and I've been here for all my life. It's time, no matter what the decision of changing the names of the school, we should work with the students and tell them that they belong, with our students of color telling them that they are meant to be in this community and strengthen them in other ways. Maybe you don't change the name. Maybe you put up a memorial to civil rights leaders. Maybe you make an announcement to say that all students are welcome here, just something. The name of a school doesn't really matter. Actions mean a whole lot more, and we can make that commitment to the students without causing a tizzy in changing the name, but if there's anything that can be said is that we need to focus on the students.
Thank you. Thanks, Gavin. Ronald Perdue followed by Billy Stewart.
President, I have nothing else to add. Billy Stewart.
You're Billy Stewart? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Billy.
That would be Katie Butts. Katie Butts. So thanks.
Thank you for welcoming us all to talk to you today with different opinions. I do not want to change the name of the school, and my name is Ronald Perdue. I am a retired purchasing agent for the state of Texas. I'm also a veteran. I had three kids go to Robert E. Lee 20 years ago. That was right after they removed the rebel flag. My kids enjoyed it. I had two cheerleaders and another girl in the drill team. We were avid Robert E. Lee supporters. They all have three now diplomas from Robert E. Lee. I spoke to them this week, and I said, "If you change the name of Robert E. Lee, you might as well use those diplomas as toilet paper, because you are erasing their history." There's thousands of kids who have graduated from Lee that have diplomas and would like to remember the fond times of Lee. Now, whether or not you think Robert E. Lee was like slaves, didn't own slaves, whatever, that's immaterial. The name of the school should be Robert E. Lee. If you start taking down statues, changing names, we are acting like ISIS. Now, that's a pretty big term, ISIS, all over the world. They're taking statues down, changing names, trying to erase history. You do not erase history. You keep history for everyone. Now, there's good history, there's bad history, but you do not discard history. So that's why I do not want to change the name of Robert E. Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Butts followed by Johnny Garza.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I approach you as an alum of Robert E. Lee, a Texas-certified U.S. history teacher who spent many years in the classroom, and a Tyler resident, and I am in favor of changing the name of our high schools. I think we have a great opportunity with the passing of the bond, building of new schools, to seek reconciliation in our community and get rid of a symbol of oppression, absolutely not to erase history. It belongs in the classroom and in our textbooks, and I don't think anybody's advocating for erasing history, but rather to remove a symbol of oppression and to really approach it with compassion for all students and employees of the district and for our community. I think you have a chance to really make a difference with your vote, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Butts. Johnny Garza followed by Reverend Michael Mast.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Let me get this right here. Oh, don't you hate it when that happens? I'd like to say that renaming Robert E. Lee High School would send the wrong message to the local community and the world, and I emphasize the world not so much because we live in a digital age where we have access to information unlike any time in human history, but more so because what is fueling racism here and around the globe is a direct and verifiable result of an ideology called neoliberalism. As a side note, there's nothing new or liberal about that term. This ideology has been so pervasive, it has touched every aspect of human interaction, from education, finance, law, and the environment, and even the nation's sovereignty. George Monbiot, an author and economist, would say neoliberalism hates democracy. One of the strongholds of neoliberalism is its use of the concept of divide and conquer, keep us arguing amongst ourselves while further oppressing the working class. The sure antidote to racism here and across our nation, in my opinion at least, is a strong, prolific, and assertive effort to educate our fellow citizens of the power they have by spending their money. Here's an economic truth, and I have to emphasize, federal taxes do not fund federal spending. Gosh, that's... Okay, so where were we? Yeah, that's pretty... Okay. Once you understand that truth, it'll change the way you view the world. Let's be reasonable and responsible and go to the root of the problem of racism, which is income inequality, and demand from our politicians is a real solution to racism, which is in part a federal jobs guarantee program. By doing this, we not only quell racial tensions in our community, but we also give ourselves a living wage, because that is exactly what the jobs guarantee program would do, and what more, what's more, it'll happen so fast it'll make your head spin. Dr. Martin Luther King understood this very well when he marched on Washington for jobs and freedom. You might be asking yourself at this time, "What does economics have to do with the topic tonight?" I submit to you, it has everything to do with the topic tonight, in the sense that a prosperous people have no time for hate or reminiscing about...
Time's up. Yes. Reverend Mast followed by Rex Ellis.
My name is Reverend M.K. Mast. I'm a resident of Tyler, and I have lived in Tyler for the last 41 years. I have two children that graduated from John Tyler. I have two grandchildren that now attend T I S D. Change the name of Robert E. Lee. It is time. How long do you wait? Let's look at the real issue involved here. How does it affect the students, basically the minority students, in our school district? It affects them adversely. In May of 1954, in the court decision of Brown versus the Board of Education, Thurgood Marshall argued effectively that to continue discrimination is to create a permanent underclass. When my children were young and asked me about Robert E. Lee, what was I to tell them? He was a slave owner. He fought against the United States, and let's destroy that. He continued to hold his slaves as long as he could. He did not free any slaves. Change the name of the school of Robert E. Lee. You changed Emmett Scott? Emmett Scott was named after a black man, but it was changed, and it was changed in such a way that the majority of the minority community at the time never knew that it was going to be changed until it was done. Change the name of Robert E. Lee.
Mr. Rex Ellis, you have the privilege of being the last public comment tonight. Are you here? Then that means the Reverend M.K. Mast was our last speaker. Thank you for your behavior and for your consideration of all the views that were spoken here tonight. Let's take a five-minute break. I'm assuming most of you are not going to stick around for the rest of our meeting, and it'll be hard for us to conduct business in the midst of 300 people leaving. Go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Leaves us at item 13, Business Legal Finance Consent Agenda. Are there any items that we want to pull other than item B? Gifts and donations. If not, then...
I move we approve everything but item B out of the Business Legal Finance Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfeld.
Second.
Do I have a second? Washman has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, approval of gifts and donations.
We love getting to this point of the actual meeting at 9:20 and getting to the sponsorship of our schools. You know, these enterprising funds that are provided for our students, in this case, our student athletes surely do help. I saw on Twitter the other day, we have one coming in regard to John Tyler football. So we love the fact that our community is supporting our extracurricular activities whenever our school district budgets that are directed towards our campuses and the classroom don't always cover the full cost of competition for our kids. So we love our community supporting that. So from the Lee Hoops Club, we have Robert E. Lee basketball as a recipient to the tune of $6,300.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Any discussion on this? If not, I'll take a motion to accept this generous donation.
I move that we accept donations.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Good.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 14, Curriculum Instruction Consent Agenda. Is there anything that we want to pull? Any discussion on these items? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve the Curriculum Instruction Consent Agenda A through Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfeld. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moves us to Future Business. August 28th, first day of school for students. 7 through 9 September, the Christus Trinity Mother Frances Football Classic, September 7th Board Workshop, September 18th regular meeting, convocation this Friday.
Yeah, that is not a public meeting. That's actually a large staff meeting, just in case anyone was concerned about it. We do provide opportunities for the media to attend because it is a celebration of our community, or our school community here. This year's theme is the home team. It is not sports-oriented, but being in service towards our community and making sure we're doing everything in that direction.
Thank you very much. Come to the end of the agenda. We'll all accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second.
Everybody has, I think everybody moved. All in favor, say aye.
Hey, I just want to say one thing. Fritz, you did a great job tonight. And even though most of them have left, I'm really impressed and proud to be a part of this town, and I was really proud of my community tonight, acted in a civil manner. this town, and I was really proud of my community tonight, acted in a civil manner. And I feel like if anything, that can be an example to other people on how to discuss things and get your feelings out and all that, and your opinions. So well done, all those that were here in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.